Hi, everyone. Um, first of all, I cough when I talk right now, so um, I may have to like pause for a second, but um, I'll get started with the script. Um, as the chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present can hear me. School committee members and student reps or not, um, no student reps, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes, here.
Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Uh, Lydia Clancy?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yeah, uh, here, yep.
Um, staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yeah.
Um, Brian Haas?
Yes.
Um, uh, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law in June 16th, 2021, and Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. Includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This new law has has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternative means of public ass access to the deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of the public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting law's requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations, such as the requirements regarding posting notices of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice, um, sorry, of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is convening by Zoom video conferences posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference accordingly be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible and viewable by the public. Event, uh, sorry. Additional additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Use the ring, raise your hand feature function now. If you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, so I can make note of it. Okay, um, meeting ground rules, um, I'm skipping the public comment section because we um, don't have that on this agenda. Um, before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business. Into a short, accurate meeting minutes, please hold off on speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. To start, I believe we need a roll call to come to order. Um, so Elizabeth Albota? Oh, she's muted, um. Alright, Mary Brannely?
Here.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Here.
Me, here. Um, does Elizabeth have to say, okay, yeah, Elizabeth Albota?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Here.
Um. I was wondering if people would be okay with um, doing the CPC letter um, before the switching number three and number two on the agenda?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
So without objection, um, let's move to number three. Um. Uh, what's everybody's thoughts on the letter? Um, it's the initial letter that Lydia had written um, in support to CPC. Um, after talking to CPC and um, asking Jay a couple of questions about their email. Um, I added some things and I think Natasha um, made some edits this morning. I kind of added things quickly last night. Um, are people okay with that letter?
I am.
Okay, any questions?
No, I think it does what it's supposed to do.
Did a great job, both of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um.
Jay, wanna talk?
Yeah, can we unmute Jay for a second? I wanted to just, um. Let me see if I can pull it up. Um.
And just for context, why, do I just wanted to add like what I had changed for for awareness was more of the the grant, my understanding of the grant is specific to the fencing and netting. And I think keeping with the scope that that is the the maintenance regarding that, I think is it sounded like what we wanted to clarify that there is no minimal to no ongoing maintenance for that. But the separate part of other things which are outside the scope of this grant agreement for general maintenance will be looked at, but isn't falling under this particular action that we're addressing.
Um, should we read it quickly just to make so Jake can hear the additions and to have it on the record? Um.
I think it's helpful if it's not posted, sure.
Okay, I had um, shared a copy previously, but then added to it. Um, by any chance does someone else mind reading it?
I can read it if you want, Hillary.
That's.
Thank you.
Okay, no worries. Okay, um, dear Community Preservation Committee members, as it's at its meeting on Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, the Maynard School Committee, MSC, voted unanimously to permit Friends of Maynard Softball to apply for Community Preservation Committee CPC funding to improve the conditions of Kenan softball field. The request for permission was presented by Jason Rasche, who explained the dire need for a new fence around the field and safety netting behind the home plate. Aspet Valley Little League AVLL softball has developed into a robust program in Maynard due to its efforts of Mr. Rasche and other members of Friends of Maynard Softball. Between AVLL and Maynard Public Schools MPS softball, Kenan Field has seen a lot of use in recent years. Normal wear and tear in addition to outdoor seating or sorry, seasonal degre- degradation, blah. Degradation have created several safety concerns that currently require immediate attention. Unfortunately, because of regulations limiting the amount of money, school districts are allowed to spend on non-instructional facility-related expenses, MPS cannot contribute towards these athletic field enhancements at this time. MSC can attest to the fact that Kenan Field is MPS's property and under its jurisdiction. Justin DiMarco, Director of Maynard Department of Public Works, can confirm this attestation. MSC has reviewed Mr. Rasche's completed application and fully support supports it. Mr. Rasche not only has not only taken, has not only taken the initiative to pursue funding, but he has also secured the potential donations of dugouts in a new scoreboard. We are very grateful for Mr. Rasche's and the Friends of Maynard Softball's work towards improving Kenan Field. The MSC is willing to enter into a grant agreement with the CPC to oversee the administering and dispersing of any grant funds awarded if needed. Friends of Maynard Softball is seeking grant funding for fencing and netting surrounding Kenan Field, which requires little to no ongoing maintenance. The MSC understands that CPC funding may not be used for ongoing maintenance purposes. Although not part of this grant application, MPS, in collaboration with various community and town stakeholders, is also working towards the development of an ongoing maintenance strategy for all school fields. Please let us know if you require any additional information from us. Sincerely, Hillary Griffith, Maynard School Committee Chair on behalf of the Maynard School Committee. And Lydia, thank you as well. I know you did to the creation of this letter.
Thank you.
Um, so does that work for you, Jay?
Oh, he's muted.
Hmm. Uh.
Yeah, I mean, it works for us. It answers all the questions that they ask, so. Um, and with the addition of stuff, I think it'll be good.
Alright. Um.
I just want, I just wanted to comment too, um, Jay, nice job with um, having um, Jim McDonald to McDonald Development. He's done a lot and um, so thank you for reaching out and thank you to him for for stepping up.
No, that's fortunate. Um, I've fortune to live in one of his buildings for five years.
There you go.
Thought it worked out.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that'd be awesome to get new dugouts and a new setup down there.
Yeah.
I thank you all for taking the letter and go over it.
The CPC's email to me um, expressed a desire for more information about field maintenance. Um, because what the grant is asking for doesn't really isn't with regards to spending money on field maintenance, we don't want to get too into that here. Um, but I think we recognize that we really need to make maintaining the fields um, a priority and so that we don't waste or negate the hard work um, of other folks maintaining facilities, um, regardless of how the field task force decides and we vote on um, pursuing that.
Um, I'll make a motion that we um, accept, approve and accept the letter as is written and allow Hillary, I guess, to si- sign it on our behalf to submit to the CPC.
I second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Oh, wait, do I have to ask for a discussion during between them?
For further discussion.
Sorry. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Lydia?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Oh, no, she's frozen.
Oh, she's frozen in deep thought.
Yeah. I thought I thought. Well, I'll share while she's frozen. I didn't mean I don't want discussion. I just knew we already discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, Hillary, yes, um.
Great.
And that's four, so, um, oh, Elizabeth.
Yes, yes, for me, can you hear me? Yeah, hi, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Jay, and Friends of Maynard Softball. Um, I don't know if people haven't seen the fundraiser they're running right now. Um, they're doing already off to like a really fantastic job and I think a week. Um.
Yeah, within the week, we got, we're drawing tomorrow down at Kenan. For it was a scratch ticket basket raffle and went from one and we're up to five at this point. With all the help that people have donated, so it's getting there.
How do you find out about it, Jay?
Uh, it's on Facebook. Uh, we have a Facebook company page, uh, Friends of Maynard Softball, and then um, I mean, it's mostly through there, but we can help if you know anybody that's on Facebook, we can do it too. We're drawing at noon tomorrow, live, I believe, at some point somewhere with some of the softball players.
So, thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, um, so, uh, Lydia has informed us that she's resigning from the school committee. Um, this is uh, sad for me. I think that um, it's sad for the district too. Um, she's put in a ton of effort and dedication to the school over the last um, two and a half years. Um, and I can't imagine getting through new administrators, COVID, um, and everything without Lydia. Um, I, um. We have a a letter of resignation from Lydia that um, was just added to the folder. Um. Uh, would this be the time to read that or, um? Uh, I see at the end that uh, there was a request to read it at the meeting and have it entered in public record. Um. That, um, let me see, move it over here. I can read it unless somebody else would rather read it and not have to pause to breathe.
Would you prefer that I read it, Hillary, since I wrote it and because I know that you're having problems with um, talking?
If you're comfortable, if you're not, I'll do it too.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine doing it. Probably, um, to save you and your lungs right now. Juggling. Um, okay, Madam Chair, with deep regret, I submit my official notice of intent. Oh, did you bring me the one that we printed off? Alright, let me pull it up.
I can also read it, Lydia, if you'd prefer.
Oh, do you mind, Mary?
I would be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, with deep regret, I submit my official notice of intent to vacate my seat on the Maynard School Committee as of December 31st, 2021. From the various discussions you and I have had, you know, this is not a decision I made lightly or even wanted to make. However, remaining on the school committee is untenable for me at this time. The last two and a half years have been simultaneously rewarding and painfully challenging. For the most part, I am incredibly proud of what the school committee has accomplished, and I want nothing more than to ex- exit quietly and recede into the background. But I would be remiss if I did not bring to light my concerns about the problematic dynamics within the school committee that led to my decision to leave before my term is over. As there is no venue for this discussion, I will elaborate in this resignation letter. The Maynard School Committee is currently um, is currently constituted, constituent, but well, is in ca- as constituted is incapable of operating as a unified body. In previous years, members might not have agreed on business matters or even gotten along, yet the majority of us were still able to work together despite and in some cases in consideration of our differences because the majority agreed to adhere to procedures and protocols. That is no longer the case, and despite training, workshops, and conversations with peers, professionals, and legal counsel, the splintering of the committee doesn't simply persist. It progresses. Operational dysfunction buoyed by individual agendas has greatly diminished the school committee's efficacy in overseeing its school district. Acts of defiance against the chair and superintendent refuses to follow school committee operating protocols and demands for personal accommodations have resulted in a committee more akin to five people working independently, parallel to one another, rather than cooperatively in tandem toward a collective goal. The simplest of tasks, setting meeting agendas, following communication protocols, or allowing the superintendent and his staff to simply do their jobs have all become points of contention within the committee. The minutest of details, such as the font in which the committee must format all documents, is dictated. The degree of micromanaging that takes place is neither appropriate nor healthy for anyone involved. I believe each of us came to the school committee with good intentions, eager to help provide the education Maynard students deserve. Each of us has many good ideas and suggestions for best serving the community. Yet, as enthusiastic, intelligent, motivated, and creative as each of us may be, nothing can be accomplished by a committee whose members can't set aside their egos, follow basic ground rules, and stop actively working against each other. I am not claiming innocence in this situation. I willingly acknowledge my contribution to the culture of today's school committee, but I have also worked tirelessly to improve it. Unfortunately, the constant battles and relentless struggles to operate within the group have made it impossible for me to affect the positive change that I set out to when I ran for election. However, the issues that undermine the work of the committee will not resolve themselves in my absence. In removing myself from the school committee, my hope is that the remaining members will con- consider their part in the deterioration of its morale and agency. It is my hope that they, along with whoever fills my seat, will reflect on the mission to which they are committed and will seek out ways to compromise and align. My final request as a school committee member is for this letter to be read and entered into the public record as a school committee meeting tonight, Thursday, December 30th, 2021, and attached to the school committee's email to the select board when announcing the vacancies. All the best to you and the district. Sincerely, Lydia Clancy.
Okay, um, so then we have a letter, um, from uh, the, my understanding with emails with Greg and David is that the school committee writes a letter um, and votes to, as a group, send um, the letter to the select board. This letter will be read at the correspondences section of the select board meeting on Tuesday. Um, and then at that point, the select board will, um, I suppose, and us, will schedule a joint meeting. Um, the one thing I put in the letter, um, I think everybody's read the letter that I have in the folder. Um, my hope is to have the position filled as soon as possible so we can maintain continuity. Um, the next regularly, just to make the scheduling easier, it seemed like the next regularly scheduled select board meeting would make sense. Um, I want to make, I I assume most of the select board is available for their regularly scheduled meeting, but um, I haven't had the chance to confirm availability for the school committee on the 18th. Um, if we include that request in the letter, are people in ju- I know Mary is free after nine o'clock.
Right, I, I guess, yeah, I guess Brian, it would be a question for Brian. So when I was doing my calendar, I realized that I've got a conflict because we've got the Green Meadow um, visioning session. That's one of the nights from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And uh, it's a Zoom meeting, and I happened to be talking to David about something else today, David Gavin, and I mentioned it to him, and um, Justine St. John and Chris De Silva are also part of that group. So that's two of the five um, selects board um, that will be doing it also. So he said, I I said we could do, you know, one of a couple of things, we could either do nine o'clock because that's when the visioning set ends, or David said it might make more sense to do like a special meeting just for that. Um, you know, like the day after or something like that, because he knows the sense of urgency of getting uh, getting the position filled. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Um. Should I edit the letter to say that um, we would like to request that we meet as soon as possible? Um. At a mutually agreeable time, um, and then uh, talk further with um, folks about um, the specifics for a date?
That would be good.
Yeah, I think the date can be scheduled. I think it's the, by the charter and MGL, it's 30 days from the vacancy occurring that it um, the meeting needs to be scheduled, so.
It might make the most sense to have like a doodle poll, just so that we're not going back and forth and, yeah, in that.
Makes sense.
I think um, also, um, part of this will be, I'm guessing, we'll be posting something on either Facebook or our website or sending out a push just to notify the community of the vacancy to solicit letters of interest.
I thought that was the select board's job.
Um, no, it's um, not necessarily their job to do. And I know in the Charter Review Committee it came up, um, it was it was more the 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 board vacant, that that they would be usually the owners of that. And I know looking at other what other towns have done, the so- the school committees have.
Uh, Colleen.
Colleen.
Oh.
I know in the past, we got in trouble or.
No, when, when I, I don't know really what past practices. I did speak to the town clerk a few weeks ago, and she said it was up to the um, the select board because they are the voting committee, they are the, I don't know how you would word it, the more dominant board, the more town. I forget the wording she used.
In the past, it has been the select board that has initiated.
As long as.
They do all the appointments.
Yeah, I think that um, I'll, I'll log on to the select board meeting on Tuesday when they take the correspondence. And um, I believe on Wednesday afternoon, Brian, David, and Greg and I have um, a meeting. And so we can make sure we're all on the same page over what that posting says. Um, I've heard that letters of intent would go to David and myself, and then they would be shared among folks. Um, but we can iron out those details on Wednesday. Um, and make sure we're consistent, and then um, I don't see any harm in, you know, everybody sharing it. Um.
Yeah.
Like once things make, make it to Facebook, it's all sort of relevant where else it's shared, because that's where everybody reads it.
Right.
Um, but we can get on the same page about the details for that on Wednesday. Um, because we're gonna vote on this letter, I just want to read the sentence that I changed. I changed um, right now to as such, we would like to request that we meet to fill this position as soon as possible at a mutually agreeable time.
Perfect.
Instead of asking for the 18th.
Yeah, thanks, Hillary. Thanks, Melissa.
It did, I just, I know that those, just for added FYI, I know the select board did, um, in their packet um, for Tuesday, they actually had already, or Greg had already put a placeholder for January 18th um, on their um, anticipated, anticipating the correspondence, so I don't know if.
I'll send it to um, I think David and Greg tomorrow morning. Um, should I read this letter before we vote on it?
Sure.
Sure, for the audience, yeah.
Good one, we're here.
Do you want somebody else to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if somebody wants to, that would be great.
I'll read it. Okay, uh, Maynard Select Board, Attention, David Gavin. Uh, December 31st, 2021, Chairman Gavin and members of the select board is with sincere regret that I must inform you of a vacancy on the Maynard School Committee as of midnight, December 31st, 2021. Lydia Clancy is no longer a member and has submitted a letter of resignation expressing as much. Lydia has dedicated significant time and energy to the Maynard Public Schools over the past few years and has been instrumental in increasing efficiency, inclusivity, oversight, and transparency. Her experience and dedication has helped the district through the onboarding of new administrators and reasonably, oh, sorry, responsibly dealing with the past two years of COVID-19 crisis. The school committee thanks Ms. Clancy for her service. In the interest of continuity, we'd like to request a joint meeting with the select board as soon as possible to fill this vacancy in order to maintain the effectiveness of the school committee. As such, we would like to request that we meet to fill this position as soon as possible at a mutually agreeable time. Um, please let us know if you require any additional information. If you require any additional information from us, we will await your response and invitation to a joint meeting in which we will appoint the next member of the Maynard School Committee. Sorry, uh, sincerely, Hillary Griffith, Maynard School Committee Chair. The only thing I was just, when I was reading it, um, the sentence you added, yeah, it sounded a little redundant. Well, also, just the sentence is as soon as possible, then we said it as soon as possible again, so I don't know um, that word, I.
Okay, I'll just take out as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we know that, but um, yeah, yeah, it just, um, I think it was just sentence behind sentence, but uh, I think it sounds great, though.
Okay. Um.
So I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion that we um, accept and approve this letter to the select board um, announcing the vacancy of the um, school committee position. Um, and allow Hillary Griffith to sign on behalf of the school committee.
I can second.
Okay, um, any any further?
Poor kid.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yeah, I don't know, is it appropriate for me to vote? I sort of feel like I should abstain on this. I don't know, is it?
I think it, I think it says the remaining members send the notice, but I don't know how firm.
Yeah, I I I don't, yeah, I'm gonna abstain just because I don't think it's proper.
Okay, um, Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Hillary Griffith, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Poor thing.
Okay, uh. Brian, I know there's the superintendent report in the folder. Is, do you want, you need to, do you want to say something about that tonight? Um.
Can, oh, is it okay for me just to say a couple of words about Lydia? Is that
Oh, yeah.
Thing? I just, um, Lydia, I, having worked for, with you for the last two and a half years, I just want to thank you very, very much for the incredible, the yeoman's job that that you've done. Um, I, in all the number of years that I've been on the committee, I've never seen anyone that invested so many hours. It was basically a full-time position. And you led us all. You were great as far as delegating, um, telling people what, you know, what we needed to do. You really, really, I I find it hard to believe that we we'd find somebody else that would have led us through COVID as well as as you did. Um, so just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Mary. I appreciate it a lot.
I'm gonna really miss you. I think that
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, you've offered so much over the years. Um. I think about how, as like especially as parent, how um, I felt like we had no voice years ago. And when you joined the school committee, I felt like our kids had a voice. Um. That's my selfish reason, but um, I also look at like the the things the district went through, and I can't imagine some, you know, COVID.
Thank you.
Um, and I really appreciate your offer to um, continue helping the school committee um, with the transition and with policy and lending your experience and expertise.
Absolutely, and yeah. I'm here, I want to help.
Um.
Can we get an update from Brian before he has to sign off?
Good.
Sure. Um, Madam Chair, and I will just add, it's been a pleasure working with you, Lydia. Uh, and I'm sure you'll stay in touch and continue to support the school committee and the schools as you have.
And you.
And me, thank you. Um, I know there's a report in there, just a couple of updates, um, because we actually have a few people online. Um, some of the things that have happened in the last literally 48 hours. We were able to acquire several thousand K and 95 masks for staff, thanks to Desi. Um, we were also able to, I'm going to get them tomorrow, actually, the at-home antigen tests. So I will pick those up tomorrow, and there's a couple of times, one on Saturday, one on Sunday, that I put out there that staff can come and pick them up prior to school on Monday, so people have the option to take the test if they, an at-home, um, antigen test if they want to, um, and we all, so that's great. Um, that really helps if people, and obviously the sort of common sense comes into play. If you're sick, you're not coming to school anyway, but if you're questioning it, or if you're not feeling 100% and you want to, um, use an at-home test, that becomes an option. And that actually, each staff member gets a kit, and each kit has two tests. One to be used on Sunday and one for a later date. And most recently, we worked with CIC to add the routine COVID testing, sort of otherwise known as pool testing, um, for the high school, beginning on Monday as well. Um, so we sent information on that out today as well to the high school. So if you have a high school student, um, if you haven't signed the consent form electronically online, you can do that. Um, very simple process. So those three sort of big, um, big things. Um, CDC changed the isolation time from 10 to five days. Desi will be putting out information. Um, something came out during this meeting, or actually right before, that I haven't even read yet, um, which I don't think will clarify that completely for us, but in the next few days, they'll be putting out more FAQs, which obviously I will share with the, with the school committee and the community as well, as quickly as possible.
Um, can I just confirm, because I've had a lot of people ask, for the pool testing, particularly next week, what's the schedule? Is it like Fowler and High, High School on Monday and Green Meadow on Wednesday, or?
Yes. So the only thing that we added was high school, we, in working with them today, agreed on Monday, following Fowler, so it's, I want to say it's mid-morning by the time they'll move over to Fowler, uh, to the high school, excuse me.
People have expressed some concern about Green Meadow not being tested till Wednesday. Um, is there any interest in moving that forward?
Uh, it's really a capacity issue. Um, I can see if CIC has more staff, but it's really their, um, their capacity to be able to do it. It takes more, more staff to pool test at Green Meadow because of the age of the kids. Um, so I can check with them if they have any ability to add staff.
Um, I think there's probably some benefit to Wednesday as well, in that, you know, New Year's Eve events will become positive a little bit after Monday.
But.
But I just wanted to confirm, Natasha?
Um, the only thing I wanted to just mention and was, I know for the Board of Health, they talked about, and this was before Desi came out with their guidance, that the home test should not be reported to them, that they should, uh, people who test positive should report to their primary care. And then the Desi guidance came out and said, um, that staff should report a positive to the school officials. Um, so I just, I know there was a little bit of confusion, um, with, you know, would that be something that you would then report to the Board of Health? If, if a staff has a positive, I guess, rapid test, would that be the expected protocol from that, or is it that we would be telling them to contact their primary care doctor as the Board of Health indicated?
Yeah, I think we follow the Board of Health directions. I will confirm with the nurses in the morning.
Okay.
From, from what I've heard, the, the at-home test is the first one, that if you test positive, then you're supposed to go to your, your primary and, and get the P, PRC or PCR.
PCR, correct.
Thank you, I always get that acronym wrong.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they, and it is part of the CDC guidance. It just seemed different that the, then Desi was not saying exactly that, that they said, you know, you test positive, which I don't disagree, you should let some, somebody in the school know, but then it just kind of made it a little bit more confusing that it wasn't in line with the CDC exactly, and the Board of Health was just saying something different. And there are, there were teachers who were listening to the Board of Health meeting, um, as well, so, uh, which was just the day before.
Yep.
And just to clarify, so then the pool testing from now on will be Fowler High School on Mondays, and then Wednesday for the Green Meadow? Is that, that's going to be every week, the same schedule?
Yep, the schedule won't change.
Okay, and then do we have, um, any indication of whether we'll get more tests for staff at some point? Any news on that?
No, really, this just came through yesterday.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And my guess is as the supply chain builds, and if we need it, and they make them.
Right.
The state will work to get them for us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have two quick questions, um, or thoughts of, sort of related to the two previous topics. Um, with regards to the field, um, things, we need to really be careful that at Brian's field meetings, um, we only have a maximum of two school committee members present. Um, the readout that happened previously can't happen, um, as an ongoing plan. Um, I was thinking, oh, yes.
Sorry, I just also want to note that we didn't read out from the past meeting either.
Yeah, so I had talked to Dorothy about that, and the answer was basically, that's how you address a mistake. That's not how you avoid complying. Um, and so it's really not a appropriate thing to do repeatedly. And then also, because the school committee member comments, were really asking, looking back at my notes, were mostly asking questions and not giving a lot of opinion. Um, she thought it was possible, we could have fallen on the side of the line of not being deliberations and being, asking questions of the community members. Um, but that's a super wicked, super slippery slope that we don't want to get into anymore. Um, I understand people have concerns about, um, dissemination of information, because a lot of really great info from stakeholders are shared at those meetings that we don't hear in other sources. But I'm hoping that maybe we can just pledge that whatever school committee members are present at that meeting can make a real effort to share as much detail as possible at the report outs. Um, like the subcommittee member com- comment, report outs on the next regularly scheduled meeting as way to, um, fill in other folks. Um, and then, I'm, but I'm totally open to other alternatives that comply with open meeting law and allow Brian to run his meetings as he chooses, um, which is his prerogative. Um, and then with regards to the vacancy on the board, I know that, um, the Personnel Subcommittee may need, um, to meet before we're able to appoint, um, a replacement. Um, I'm happy to help fill in on that role for the next few weeks until that's filled, but I wanted to see if other people had any thoughts on that, or were okay with that, um, before doing that. I also don't know the plan for meetings and such, yes.
Um, Hillary, there isn't really a whole lot going on. It's mostly just the negotiations with Mesa, so, um, I think that that would be good if you, because it would give you, um, some reference to what is happening, and then, um, you can help the new person who comes in to take on.
Yeah, I'm good with you, with you filling that slot in the meantime, also.
Welcome to the subcommittee.
Are you okay with that, Elizabeth? Oh, she is like, oh.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me? Can you hear me at all? Okay, sorry, I turned off my screen so maybe you would stop freaking out. Um, my other question is, um, who, what to subcommittee, what, oh, I'm gone now?
Nope.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Got it.
Um, can you hear us? Elizabeth?
Madam Chair, is there something, I know six oh nine, I just want to see.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Talk quick.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Okay, my quick question, the Fields Subcommittee now.
I didn't hear enough of that.
I think she's asking who's on it.
Can we take this offline maybe?
Yeah.
We can.
Maybe we'll, we can follow up later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because I, I just, I can't hear very well.
Yes, that's fine. I just wanted to know who they're going to be, that's all. Yeah, sorry. Yep, move on.
Um, okay, do we want a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Some question, but we don't need to discuss that, right? We can just vote? Okay. Oh, Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Um, Lydia?
Yes.
Me, yes. Um, thank you, Lydia.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, Lydia. Not going far.
Thank you, Brian and Colleen.
Yes.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.